Call needs order. Please stand for the President of the District.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Mr. Fred Wytham, founder of the congregation of Temple Beth Havada.
Dear Lord, as we gather together this evening, we pause to acknowledge your holy presence, inspiring us with the highest vision of ourselves. To be a leader is to act with righteousness. We pray that the leaders of our community be ever contingent of the need for ethics and justice in all aspects of our lives. Bless them with wisdom and strength to serve the citizens of Fountain Hills with fairness and equality. Guide us towards the creation of a town where the principles of democracy are respected, where the rights of the weak are protected, and where a spirit of harmony prevails. Amen.
Thank you, Fred. Thanks for coming out today to be with us. Roll call please, Beth.
Mayor Havada?
Yes.
Vice President Elsie is absent as well as Councilmember Hampton. Councilmember Yates?
Present.
Councilmember Lizzette?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickey?
Yes.
And Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Okay, I'll start off with my, uh, my report. I was invited to a social event a week ago, and I went, viewing it as an opportunity to network with some of the companies that are represented here in Fountain Hills. And also to discuss some of our current issues with members of the legislature. My husband was also present. After the missing hour, there was a program that included the guest speaker, but because the governor was there, he was given a few minutes for a welcome. Unfortunately, she used that opportunity to insult me personally in front of a few hundred people because I have opposed her attempt to grab away our town's construction sales tax. I've spoken about that tax before, sometimes referred to as TPT, and how it would cost our town a loss in revenue of about three hundred thousand per year and a lot more when the elements property is developed. I want to assure you that this has not deterred me in any way from fighting for this tax issue or any future issue that I see as harming our town. As far as the personal tax, I will take the high road. All I got to say is it's a good thing she didn't insult our town. I also attended the Korea-America Trauma Summit at the Rural Metro Headquarters. South Korean doctors had spent the week with our Rural Metro personnel and a local hospital, learning about their new techniques in caring for brain trauma and extradition from crashed vehicles. I was very impressed to learn that our Rural Metro techniques are so state of the art that these doctors traveled here from South Korea to learn from them. I also met this month with East Valley Mayor, and we once again committed to fight since attempts to take over our auditing system and our construction sales tax. I welcomed delegates from the Trail Symposium at the Fort, many of whom were staying at our hotels. I invited them, of course, to spend some time here in Fountain Hills during their week-long visit. In closing, I know I speak for my fellow councilmembers when I say that our prayers go out to the victims and families of the terror attack in Boston, a tragic and sad reminder that we must all do our part to keep our town safe. And that's my report. State Representative Michelle Uzenty was supposed to be our speaker today. Uh, she has rescheduled. Uh, Representative Uzenty has three children, two of whom are sick, and they're both toddlers. So she, um, she's not gonna be able to be here. She's home taking care of them. So we'll go on to the presentation by our Deputy Town Manager, Julie Jettie, regarding the town's budget report for all funds and the third quarter ending March thirty first, two thousand thirteen.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Nine months of the year have passed, and so we're getting close to the year end. And this is really the time for the basis for our next year's budget, the projections. Nine months is a pretty good indicator. So first, we'll talk about the revenues. Again, um, the General Fund is our town's main operating fund, and it's used to fund our general government operations, such as our police, our fire, our recreation programs, and community center, et cetera. The General Fund makes up about seventy-five percent of the town's total revenues, and again, it's used to pay for most operations of the town. General Fund revenues by source. The sources of revenue for the General Fund are the town's local sales tax, about five point two million dollars out of the total, and the state share revenues, about three point six million dollars. Both of those revenue sources combined is ninety-two percent of all revenues in the General Fund. Both our state and local sales tax are higher than last year. However, they are a little bit less than projections. They're at about ninety-six percent of our nine-month budget, and they're under budget by about three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. That's about four percent. The state share revenues, this chart is showing the three revenue sources that make up the General Fund state share revenues. The three combined equal about three point six million dollars for about the nine months. The sales that are reflected in the state sales tax as well as our local sales tax really reflects eight months of sales because of the lag between when they report and when we collect the money. So we have about one or two more months of actual with, um, our winter visitors and tour season, so the next couple of months may make up for where we are. The vehicle license taxes derive from new vehicle licenses. This chart shows the breakdown of our total local sales tax, including the portion that is transferred to the capital improvement, um, fund. Our retail is down from last year about point three percent, but our restaurant and bars are up fourteen percent compared to last year. The retail is consistent from what I'm hearing from other cities and towns, but it is down somewhere around point three percent to one or two percent. So it's not inconsistent with other cities and towns in the state. Our Highway User Fund, or our HERF Fund, which includes our HERF revenue as well as other revenue, they're about ten percent below projections, but within the next two months, they may get closer to budget. The pavement management, um, will remain a high priority, and adjustments to the budget have already been made to accommodate those expenditures. The other funds. Um, this is a summary of all the other funds. The big blue line for the debt service of MTC that is higher than all the others, that just indicates the payoff of the bonds for last year for town hall. But other than that, those, um, funds, they're restricted funds, and they are restricted to specific purposes, and they're coming into this as we, um, projected. Talk a little bit about the expenditures. The expenditures in our General Fund are being held to available resources. So in other words, if our revenues are down, our expenditures will be down. But the two priorities that we have, that being public safety and pavement management, are funded, and will continue to be funded. The expenditures by each department. The public safety and police and fire make up fifty-one percent of the General Fund expenditures. Community services, which includes our parks, recreation, community center seniors, that's fifteen percent of the General Fund budget. Development Services is planning and zoning, building safety and facilities. That's twelve percent of our General Fund budget. And the administration is the manager, the clerk, the finance, the economic development, and that's eighteen percent. And their total of theirs is nine point one million dollars. So, um, projections for next year, the revenues are tracking lower than a budget. If everything stays on track, the approximate shortfall is six hundred thousand dollars. But again, those expenditures have been prioritized, and we will, as the revenues don't come in, the expenditures will not be made. So we're about five hundred, six hundred thousand dollars if everything remains the same. We still have a couple of months of winter visitors and tourist season, so that may, um, close up a little bit. This is, um, just a summary of our fund balances. Again, our fund balances are the town's reserves, and they're not appropriated during the budget process. The General Fund reserves are set aside in the event of unforeseen emergency situations, and they're not to be used for ongoing operating costs. And it's the Capital Fund, obviously, that is, we do use some of those reserves because they're set aside for capital projects. And all the other funds are restricted for a specific purpose. In summary, the General Fund revenues are higher than last fiscal year, but slightly lower than budget. So, and again, the expenditures will not exceed the revenues, and the pavement management remains a priority and will be funded. And then next two months, we'll provide better data for our year-end predictions. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Julie. I guess I'm just a little concerned about the six hundred thousand dollar shortfall. Um, I know most of the numbers left early this year because Easter was early, so there aren't too many of those left. I just hope that in some way, we can make that up. Any questions from council for Julie? Okay, then, thank you.
Thank you.
Call to the public?
Mayor, your turn.
Then we'll go on to our consent agenda. Just have one item, the consideration of approving the town council meeting minutes from April twenty first for March twenty first and April fourth, two thousand thirteen. They have a motion to accept?
Mayor, come on.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dickey?
Aye.
Councilmember Lizzette?
Aye.
Councilmember Yates?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Mayor Havana?
Aye.
Mayor Five Zero?
For our agenda items, consideration of accepting two pieces of donated art titled Quiet Pursuit and Infinity Ring for a published display in Fountain Park. Mark.
Good evening, Mayor Havana, members of the council. Bear with me a second. We have two items for your consideration this evening. Um, typically, I would have split these two up, but because they were in approximately the same location proposed in Fountain Park, I combined the two. Uh, the first one we have here consideration is called, um... Go back with her. Quiet Pursuit. Uh, it is by, um, Mike Dwyer, and it is being donated by two local residents, Dr. Michael and Jean McConigal. It has a value of five thousand four hundred dollars. I also have a depiction that was provided, um, by Mr. Miles, who's also joining us this evening along with, um, Andy Thompson. Um, the piece is actually a little bit darker than what you see here. This is actually the clay version before it goes to the foundry, so it will be the typical bronze color that you would normally see. Uh, the second piece is titled Infinity Ring. Uh, it has a value of three thousand nine hundred dollars. And this particular piece will be on loan for up to a year while the process of fundraising is conducted. Both of the pieces are scheduled to be placed in Fountain Park adjacent to the amphitheater. That is a picture of the piece itself. This is also that area. Um, one of the things that was desirous was to provide a spot if you had a clear view of the fountains through the center of this particular piece. So I think it's a nice effect. And lastly, if you look in the upper corner of the park, um, if you recall, adjacent to the amphitheater area, there was a gravel area created in there which has not only plants in it, but also a number of previous pieces that were placed in there. So both of these would be placed in approximately that same area. With that, I would be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thanks. Mark, any questions? Do we have any speaker cards on this?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right, then. Um, then can I get a motion to accept both pieces?
Well, move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor Five Zero?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next items are three and four, which will be taken together. There'll be one staff report for the two items. However, we will need separate motions, uh, for each item. Number three is consideration of resolution two thousand thirteen dash twenty-five, declaring the town of Fountain Hills encroachment regulations, April eighteen, two thousand thirteen, a public record. Number four, consideration of ordinance thirteen dash O two, adopting the public record entitled The Town of Fountain Hills Encroachment Regulations, April eighteen, two thousand thirteen, by reference and amending chapter sixteen of the Town Code relating to encroachment permits.
Mayor Havana, members of council. Development Services Director has a report regarding the, um, um, chapter sixteen regarding encro- encroachment, uh, regulations for the town right-of-way.
Um, good evening, mayor, members of the council. Um, chapter sixteen deals with encroachments, which means work done in the right-of-way sidewalks or in our streets. Um, the chapter sixteen has not been updated in a while, and this is a staff-initiated, um, change. Um, to come in to more compliance of what we actually need the contractors to do, that's why we're making the recommendations. Um, some of the changes in chapter sixteen are that the contractor actually performing the work will need to get the permit, uh, not the, not the utility. So let's say if, um, Cox Cable needs to do an upgrade, and they hire a subcontractor, a lot of times Cox will try to get the permit, but we want the actual subcontractor that's gonna be physically doing the work to get the permit. So that's one clarification. Um, we also clarified that the traffic control plans need to be, um, drawn by a certified person. There's certifi- there's certifications for traffic control. Um, we want the actual person setting up the traffic control barricades to be certified, and that they contact us within three days prior to doing that work with the plan. So we have time to review it to make sure it meets all the proper standards. Um, the chapter, it wasn't clear on the off-duty officers that are needed for traffic control. Um, we clarified that we would like them to contact our MCSO District Seven first to see if they have anybody available, and if not, then they can go to another law enforcement agency. Um, we like to have MCSO do the work because they're familiar with our, with our streets and our procedures. If there is an emergency, you know, they, they know how to react properly. Um, there's also, there's also a section in there that has the authority of council to prohibit, prohibit certain excavations. Doesn't say which type. Um, we don't believe it's ever been used before, so we recommended deleting that. And there's actually a section in there that called out specific sizes, heights, and colors for mailboxes, which I don't believe has ever been used. So we just wanted to make sure they're just done to the post-op standard. And those are the major changes. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, do we have any speaker cards on this agenda?
No, ma'am.
Okay, then, uh, council discussion? Anyone?
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, councilwoman.
One question regarding the... Could you elaborate on what a certified setup contractor is for the pylons or, or?
They have to be, there's the, it's called ATSA.
Mm-hmm.
And don't make me tell you what it is. It's, it's Certified Traffic Control, uh, Safety Association. So if there ever is an accident, you wanna make sure the person setting up, designing and setting up that traffic control is certified.
Madam Mayor, along that, the same lines. And the reason I'm bringing you up is obviously there would be another cost involved for a subcontractor hiring them to do that. If the plans are already drawn by a certified engineer or somebody, and they're set up to that spec, wouldn't that satisfy the need?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay.
Have to be certified. Like your flaggers, if you have flaggers out there, they have to have their certifications. We'll actually go out and check for their certification card.
I'm with you. And I understand the health and safety aspect of it absolutely. I'm just bringing up the cost concern, but thank you, Paul.
Okay, you go. All right, thanks, Paul. All right, so I'll need a motion for number three. Can I get a motion for that?
Mayor, I move to approve resolution, uh, two thousand thirteen dash twenty-five, declaring the town of Fountain Hills encroachment regulations, April eighteen, two thousand thirteen, in public record pursuant to Arizona Revised Statute nine eight oh two.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor Five Zero?
And for number four, can I get a motion, please?
Consideration of, uh, ordinance thirteen dash two, adopting the public records entitled The Town of Fountain Hills Encroachment Regulations, April eighteen, two thousand thirteen, by reference pursuant to Arizona Revised Statutes nine dash eight oh two and amending chapter sixteen of the Town Code and all relating, uh, all relating to encroachment permits.
Mayor, second?
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor Five Zero?
Okay. We'll move on to number five. Discussion with possible directions to staff regarding the Avenue of the Fountains Improvement Project.
Mayor Havana, members of the council. You know, past December, uh, the town council directed staffs proceed with the Avenue of the Fountains Alternative B with thirteen modifications and a one point two million dollar budget. The, uh, council then approved a professional service contract with Landmark Design for the avenue median. Tonight, the plans are presented for one last review, the plans before we go off to bid, and our last Development Services Director to present the plans and consideration for approval. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to respond.
Okay, thanks, Ken. Paul?
All right, good evening. Um, a- as Ken said, um, we've been working on the design with, uh, Landmark, um, design team. We have the architect and landscape architect here to answer, answer any more technical questions. Um, should you have them? Um, we presented a concept, um, to council in January. Um, going through design and looking at budget issues, we had to make some modifications to the concept plan that you saw. So I wanna go over those tonight just so you're fully aware before we bid the project out. Um, this is just the overall, um, hardscape of the, of the plan, and I'm just gonna go through this drawing. Um, I also provided drawings to council and in the back to the, to the public, um, so you can follow along. What we did is, when we got to the budget constraints, we were looking at approximately being a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars over budget. So we had to start looking at ways to bring that down. Um, the art node areas, um, those used to have benches, so we took those benches out of the plans, and, you know, they can be donated in the future if they wanna be. And, you know, the cost savings on that are anywhere from five grand to seventy-five hundred dollars. Um, the picnic areas, um, originally, there were some larger picnic areas that could hold approximately five picnic tables. Um, we reduced them all down to hold three picnic tables. Um, so those areas got a little smaller. The number of picnic tables got smaller as well. Um, there was also some planters in the center plazas. Um, we took those away as well. Um, the site furnishings modifications, that was about a thirty thousand dollar savings. So we, so we took out some planters, we took out some benches, and we took out some picnic tables. Um, in the, uh, the center pla- in the center for the, um, for the west median, we have a, a water feature. Let me see if I can get to it. This is the Eagle's Nest Plaza, and this also shows the configuration for the picnic plaza areas where they'll have three picnic tables. Um, this is the center, this is the center fountain on the west median that you, that you saw previously. Um, we're within budget with this one, with all the other changes we made. However, this, this fountain configuration is in the sixty to seventy thousand dollar range. Um, the architect has a alternative, which instead of cascading down, it becomes geysers, and that will save about thirty thousand dollars. And I'll, I'll, I'll talk about that a little bit later. We're gonna bid it out both ways, so ultimately, council will have the ability to, to pick and choose. Um, this just shows what the, the fountains at Verde River. These didn't change. Um, again, it's, it's small geysers and on the west side, and it'll be, uh, like a negative edge flowing towards Verde River. Um, on the east center plaza, um, these fountains originally, they were thirty-eight feet by twelve feet each. Um, the new plan has them reduced to twenty-seven feet by ten feet. So reducing that, those in size, changes the construction costs, but more importantly, it changes the, uh, the pumps and the equipment, so it makes it a lot cheaper. So that was about a thirty thousand dollar savings as well. Um, this kinda just shows, this was the rendering that was shown previously. Obviously, those center fountains would be smaller this time. Um, we also eliminated two. There were four picnic tables in each plaza. We eliminated those down to two. Um, each, each picnic table is approximately fourteen hundred dollars to get one that's of a quality that will last and all the footings that need to be put in. Um, this just shows the site furnishings, the pet stations, the drinking fountain, the benches, the tables, trash receptacles. Um, planters are, are no longer being used. Um, we also have, this is the style of shade canopies. Now, the shade canopies, we took out of the base project, and we're gonna bid that as an alternate. Uh, we're looking at, I believe, the rust color in the, um, center plazas and the sage green color at the picnic areas if council wants to move forward with, with, uh, shade canopies. Um, this just shows the, the paver designs. Um, and this is the handout that you got and the, and the public has as well. And it just shows the overall landscaping. Um, the total count ends up being that we're going to be removing thirty trees, keeping fifteen trees, and adding sixty new trees. Um, you can see next to the, on the top, next to the, just to the right of the center, we left an open area so a larger event tent could be used if, if there's a, if there's a need for a larger tent. Also, on the bottom, to the left of the center, there's another open area where a larger tent could go as well. Um, this just shows the, the trees. Um, you saw this before. We made a couple modifications. We needed to make sure it met our low-water use. Um, they're using Evergreen Elms, Sisu, Mondel pine, Catalpa, and the Swan Hill Olive. Um, this is just a closer look at the landscape plan. Um, when we get to the electrical section, um, right now, I believe there's roughly fif- fifty, um, electrical outlets out there. Um, that's what we struggle with a lot. They're, they're always, they're always tripping. We, every time before the, um, before the fairs, we have to go out and spend a few thousand dollars each fair to make sure all the electrical's back up and working. Um, so what we did is, we put in thirty-two receptacles, but they're not where you can just go plug in. You're going to have to plug in this, what's called a, we call it a spider box. So they will plug in, we're gonna have fifteen of those, but then six extension cords can plug into each one. So the way it would work is that whoever's holding an event would have to come to the Parks and Recreation Department and check out one of these boxes to use for the electrical power. And this is where it'll help us monitor what's being used out there, and it should make it more efficient to use. Um, each one of these boxes are, you know, anywhere from, you know, Um, each one of these boxes are, you know, anywhere from, you know, seven hundred to a thousand dollars, so that's why we have the, the fifteen of them. Um, we also did a lighting package, which we'll talk about a little bit, um, we originally wanted, we told council that we were gonna look at the same lights that were out on the, out on the north and south side of the avenue now, um, when we got, looking into it further, we were worried about corrosion, because we're gonna get hit by water, so what we're proposing is a con- exposed aggregate concrete pole, and this is not the, um, fixture on top that we're gonna be using, it'll be more like the ones that are out there existing. So, it'll look similar to what's existing, but it'll be a concrete pole. Now, there's, I believe seventeen pedestrian lights, which are eight feet tall, so it will light the pathway, it's not gonna illuminate everything for an event, it just lights the pathway. Um, the lighting package also includes uplights at all the, uh, the art nodes, so when there's pieces of art placed, we'll have uplighting, it also lights the, the eagle that we're gonna be putting back in, so it'll light that as well, and then it also calls out for lights under the shade canopies, so if council, if we bid it out, and council elects to go with shade canopies, and also elects to do the lighting package, those shade canopies will be lit. Um, and in the general package, the, what we call the base, um, when you enter into each of the center plazas, there's, there's columns on each side of the path, both sides, there's four columns, those will have light caps on the top of them, and then the fountains are also have lights in them as well. Just to, if you look at it closely, you'll see where the li- where the light poles are. And so, the base project, it, we're estimating at just over one point one million dollars. Um, we wanna hold an owner's allowance of about forty thousand dollars, in case we hit anything that we don't know about, um, avoids us from coming back to council, asking for more money. Um, SRP was, we, this is an SRP allowance to get power to the east median, SRP was out here yesterday, we walked the site with them, um, they're getting ready to start their design, they've done some blue staking. The anticipated plan is they're going to put a, I believe it's a four by six switch cabinet, on the southwest corner of, of Suaro and the avenue. The town is responsible to do all the trenching, the conduit, the backfill, repaving of the, of the trench, um, the pads for that, for that switch. We need to come up the avenue seven hundred feet, and then set a five by seven transformer, and then we need to trench back into the center of the median, into our service, our electrical service. So, we have approximately seven hundred feet of trench we need to do, um, the pads, we also need to expose the electrical duct bank that runs across the crosswalk right at the end of Suaro, that's where they're gonna tie into, um. The one difficulty we had was citing the transformer, um, the best place to put it is like directly across from the center of the median, and let me go back. Let me see if I can. Oops, that's not good. So, if you, if you look at the bottom left, just over the word median, you'll see where there's a big bump out. On the north side of the, of the avenue, that's where the, um, shade structure is. So, we're anticipating when the south side-
Point to that, so people-
Yeah.
People could, know what you're talking about.
No, doesn't work.
That's very, that's, we've got enough up there.
Okay, so right here is where they would want to set the switch. We will need to trench up the avenue, and set a transformer here, however, there's two sets of three palm trees right here, and there should be a future, there probably will be a future, um, shade remata, so, so what we are proposing to do, is ex- is basically wipe out the first parking stall here, extend that curb, and then set the transformer right here, and then we're going to trench to our service entrance. That's the plan, I don't have the design actually from SRP yet, but that's, that's the plan. So, when we're looking at the estimates, we may need to adjust that SR, SRP allowance up a little bit. Um, now for the alternates, that gets us at, that gets us at the one point two million dollars where we're comfortable. So, the alternates are, that water feature D on the center of the west median, where we can design it to be geysers instead of cascading down, we're going to bid it out both ways, and then when we come back to council, um, depending on the pricing, you can say, leave it as shown, or we wanna do this option. Uh, we're also going to bid out the, the ten foot wide concrete walk at, as brick pavers, um, the, the architect is estimating that that's gonna be a little bit more expensive, but we'll find out when we bid it out, however the contractors come in. Um, the shade canopies are roughly, you know, mid sixties to seventy thousand dollars, so that's kind of a high priced item, um, so we'll bid that out and see what they come in at. And then the lighting package, we went with a more basic lighting package, so it's a lot less than we originally anticipated, we were carrying a, a fairly large allowance, you know, almost four hundred thousand dollars, uh, we didn't go with tree up lighting, and all, and all that kinda stuff, so, we have a very basic lighting package, which should free up a lot of money if council chooses, chooses to, to do almost everything, um, and that's where we're at. So, I'm waiting for SR, we're anticipating, hopefully getting the SRP preliminary design right now, and that should be good enough to bid, um, we still have three utility companies, um, we're waiting for, um, to get their clearance letters. If we get all those, um, we anticipate bidding the project out the first of May, um, so there's like a, almost a month bid process, so bid opening would be at the, at the end of May, and then with these options, there's, there's sixteen different combinations that the council could choose from, so it's gonna be, the architect's gonna have some work creating a, a spreadsheet to make, 'cause if you chose the base bid, it's easy, whoever's lowest, you can choose the base, what's A, or B, or C, or D, A and B, A, B and C, and so on and so forth, you have a lot of combinations. So, the more alternates we add, it's, it's harder for the contractors to bid. So, if we don't get the SRP design, um, we can use an allowance, um, a little leery about not having the utility clearance letters, um, those would probably come in as we're going through the design process, or the bid process, hopefully they say there's no conflict. Um, the three we have right now, SRP, um, Sanitary District, and I believe, um, Century Link have said they have no conflicts out there. So, what that means is if we hit one of their utilities in the median, they're on the hook, 'cause they told us there was nothing there. So, if we don't, if we don't get SRP's de- design, and we don't get the utility conflict letters, I'll sit down with the town manager and, and council member Yates and Brown, who've been working on the project with us, and we'll decide how we wanna move forward bidding it out. So, with that, if there's any questions for me, or the, myself, or the architect, we can cut answer them.
I have a question, um, so lighting, if you go with the shade canopies, does the lighting package with this price include the lights under the canopy, or is that a separate price?
Uh, the, the lights are included in the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, and I noticed that the light poles, they kinda look like they shine down, right? So, they're, and they're along the path, how on the, I can't really exactly see how, what I wanna know is are they gonna kinda light up the seating areas too, like, I know it's the walkway, but if people are sitting on the nearby benches, and, um, are they gonna have, is there some light that's gonna bleed out, or is it just gonna be totally straight down on the path?
Oh, there'll be some that'll-
But, hoping that-
They'll go out.
Come out at night, to, to sit down in the evening, and so they will have some light.
Yeah, they'll be, yeah, they'll be light.
Um, and I think that, oh, um, P A system, why aren't we gonna include a P A system in that, which never got included on the avenue when that was done?
Yeah, um, mayor, when we sat down for the thirty percent design, we, design, we discussed internally that if, if an event wanted a P A system, they would have to use a, a mobile, mobile system.
So, it would be too expensive, is that what you're saying?
Won't be too expensive, but it, there's a lot of work, it's, we'd have to add conduit, and somehow figure out how to wire the poles for the speakers, and then there's an issue of who controls the actual P A system, the electronics, does somebody come and check that out, how does it, yeah, some logistics in that as well.
Okay, so, uh, do you think we're all on schedule, right now?
Well, yeah, we're, we have the hundred percent design is in, we're-
Oh, yeah, I like that.
Yeah, the hundred percent design is in, um, we're just, we're just confirming a few numbers and a few notes on the plans, just to make sure everything matches up, but, yeah, we were, utilities are the big thing right now, SRP and the, the three utilities we're still weighing on.
Okay, does anyone else have, counsel and Dickie?
Thank you, ma'am, uh, what, sorry to seem dense, but what does the next item have to do with this?
Um, mayor, councilor Dickie, um, SRP requires a contract to do their design, so the next item is for SRP to design their power, it also includes them setting the switch, setting the transformer, and pulling all the wires, once our project installs all the trenching conduit. So, their, their twenty-six thousand dollars is to do the design, put in the switch, put in the transformer, and pull the wires, I'm sure it's much more expensive than that, but they are now creating a new account where we will pay them for electricity.
Okay, and then the forty thousand is just something, is there a budget contingent?
We, for us to do the trench, so we have to put in seven hundred feet of trench.
Madam, thank you. I know several of the infrastructure things, on the original base package, you kinda had the option of doing, well, we can fix what says is, or for a few dollars more, we can make it so that it's fixed for the next thirty years, could you elaborate on some of those infrastructure, for example, the SRP?
Um, mayor, councilor Yates, the SRP, um, we are doing the, the three phase power, which is technically more, more efficient, we can use different pumps, um, we looked at single phase, which would be, in theory, cheaper, but the problem with that is, is your service is in plat two oh eight behind the buil- behind the buildings, and for the upgrade in the amps, we would have to drill under the breezeway of plat two oh eight, so the construction costs bring that about equal a three phase, so we're setting it up for that, um, we are ripping out all the existing irrigation, putting all new in, um, one thing we wanted, we wanted to do, but weren't able to fit in the budget, is we are abandoning the electrical in place that's out there, um, we're going to remove all the boxes you see, and pull all the wires out, but all the, all the conduit will be left, so hopefully when we're digging out there in the future, we, we know where we're digging and what's what, so it would've been nice to take that out, but, but we're leaving it in, so.
Yeah?
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah?
Yes, my ma'am.
Cool.
Thank you, mayor. Paul, I have to commend, uh, you and your staff, and Landmark, and their team, for coming up and putting together a package for us that is, is affordable, it has everything we actually started out to do, and I, I think it's an absolutely fabulous design, and it will add a ton to our downtown area, and for as bumpy as it started out, and for you keeping your arms around this project, it has absolutely smoothed out, and it's becoming a real fine project, and, and thank you for doing that.
Thank you, it's not built yet, though.
No, I think, I think we'll find that to be the easy part.
I hope so.
I believe it will.
I hope so, uh-huh, and of course, thanks to councilman Brown and councilman Yates, for a big part of this, and for continuing to oversee the project.
Team effort.
We appreciate it. All right, so I would ask for a motion, oh, uh, any speaker cards?
No, ma'am.
No, and can we get a motion then?
Thank you, ma'am, I think there's no motion necessary, I think it was just a report.
You don't need a motion?
Unless you wanted to change something, there should be no motion required.
Okay, if there is no, that's good then, we're done. Thanks, Paul. Thank you guys for coming out, appreciate it. Consideration of its distribution, design, and construction contract with Salt River Project to the Avenue of Fountain Seating Improvement, the amount of twenty-six thousand eight hundred dollars, and authorized by town manager's signature.
Uh, mayor, members of the council, as discussed earlier, this, this contract is for SRP to actually design the power for the east median, um, they will set the, the switch, the transformer, once we do the trenching, place the conduits, they'll inspect it, and then they'll come out and pull the wires, so this contract is for SRP to basically provide power to the, the east median on Avenue of Fountain.
Do we have any speaker cards on this deck?
No, ma'am.
Okay, council have any discussion on this item, if not, I'll ask for a motion?
Mayor, some move.
Second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm in side zero.
Number seven, discussion with possible directions to staff regarding ordinance zero zero dash twelve, to increase the sales tax rate from one point two percent to one point six percent, and designated point one percent for downtown development, sent.
Mayor, members of the council, back in year two thousand, um, as you just indicated that, um, ordinance zero zero, um, dash twelve was approved to raise that sales tax one point two, um, from one point two percent to one, one point six percent, um, of that four tenths of a percent, that three tenths of a percent was to pay, uh, help pay for the, uh, acquisition of the McDow Mountain Preserve, that other one tenth of a percent was, was created for an excise, um, revenue fund for, uh, the downtown. Uh, the newly adopted, uh, economic development plan that the council just, uh, began adopted, has the downtown development strategy within it, um, in the upcoming thirteen, fourteen budget, um, there's a consideration to use the funding for the implementation of that plan, uh, the recommendation is to expand the use of the excise tax to implement that plan, and, and again, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but that's pretty much straightforward, is that, I know that at the time, in year two thousand, there was a, there was a desire to look at solely on the downtown, but the economic development plan looks at our other economic development centers as well, um, the, the Suaro corridor, the shade corridor, as well as the downtown, and in the plan, there's a specific action plan that talks about in, in adopt or implementing the specific area plan for downtown, so the, the funding could be used, and should be used, for those priorities to be determined in the future.
Counselor and Dickie, or can we just, I guess, if anybody wants to speak on this, it would be different, okay then, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am, that's for putting this on the agenda for me, I think this is a policy discussion, and as we go forward with the budgeting, it'll help clarify a little bit for me, I think when you looked at the minutes, hopefully, I, it was pretty clear though what the intention was when they set that aside, and it's a very serious decision, obviously, to raise a sales tax, or any kind of a tax, and I think it's pretty obvious in the discussion, if you look through the minutes, that the intention was for them to be used in the downtown area, and if you look at recent councils, including ours, if you look at historically how the funds have been used, we've obviously kept that in mind, um, a while ago, when, um, we had an economic development planner, she had at one point her salary, and, and that program was paid eighty percent with the downtown development fund, and then it was changed, I believe, councilwoman Jay, and, and I don't know how long ago it was, to fifty percent, to try and say, well, that was a little bit more in line of where her time was spent, half downtown, half the rest of the town, um, and obviously, we just went to the, the median, uh, project, and other, and projects like that, which maybe the money wouldn't have been available for if, in fact, that, that revenue source hadn't been set up as it was in two thousand. Um, when we spoke in October, we had a meeting about, uh, and talked a little bit about this, and we acknowledged that there's a level of, um, you know, that was almost a contract with, with people, uh, when that tax was passed, that it was for downtown. So, my concern with, with an overall change with this, with just sort of like the, anything goes, that if it does go to the general fund, or generally to economic development, that it could be diluted in a way that it, that to me, it was set up with, with something definite in mind, and again, if you look at the median project that we just did, and when we, and when we did other things like the, um, the, the north side of the po- of the avenue, and other ways that we've spent that, that money, to just acknowledge that it wouldn't be available if we made this change, those, those are my concerns, that we, first of all, thank you, because we're talking about it openly, and this way, as we go through the budgeting, if the council decides to change how those funds can be used, then I won't be looking at, you know, so much saying, well, it shouldn't be coming from that fund, that could be behind us possibly, and then with, I can just look at amounts like a regular budgeting exercise, so, I appreciate that, um, and, uh, I obviously am not that much in favor, it seems in the intention of it, so it's up, I believe, to, you know, everybody to discuss what they think is appropriate use of these funds.
Anyone else?
Madam, ma'am. Just for the record, we are not raising taxes, we're just-
Oh, yes.
'Cause I, it's on there, and it kinda shows that way, I just wanted everyone to be clear, and for the record, people at home, we are not raising taxes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, we, we did get a couple of emails, um, a little criticism, and I wrote back and said, no, this is from the year two thousand, we're just discussing that tax, not raising it. Anyone else have any discussion on this?
Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead.
Um, just kinda just going off of what, uh, councilwoman Dickie mentioned, I think all of us have had an opportunity to review the minutes, and from that two thousand discussion, um, a, a little ambiguous, but I think it was clear that the intention was, in fact, for downtown development- for downtown development, almost more specifically, infrastructure development. And, um, throughout the years, I think, um, council after council has utilized it for that particular purpose. I know our finance director has maintained that tenth of a percent in a dedicated excise tax fund that we utilize for that particular purpose. So I'm a little sensitive about that commitment that was made and, and honoring that commitment. However, at the same time, in honoring that commitment, I think ten years has passed, our town has, has changed, we need to also honor that commitment and take a look, um, towards the future. Our, our needs have, have changed. Um, if you look at the downtown area, I think the intention was well-intended, and it was met in that we have developed the north side of the avenue, we're in the process of enhancing the infrastructure on, on the Seeding. And there's been other projects over the years where that money's been used for in terms of bringing Swaback in town to enhance downtown development and a very number of other issues. Um, so what I'm presented with when, uh, I've reflected on this is, 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 I'm always one that likes to honor commitments that are made and understandings between past councils, although our hands aren't tied. So my thought process would be to, um, propose a, a motion here that would, would honor the future, would honor the past and the commitment that was made, as well as, um, look, looking towards, looking towards the future. In essence, maintaining the scope that was intended, but expanding that scope to be more contemporary, uh, something that would be more in line with our economic development plan. Um, so those are my thoughts at, at this point, and I'd like to hear from other folks that, a- a- and, and if not, then I'm prepared to make a motion that would, would clarify, um, where I'm coming from.
Madam Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
To chime in here, uh, I, I agree conceptually with what this was intended for, uh, but the term economic development is kinda all-inclusive, it's, it's a pie, if you will. Um, to, to set aside funds just for one specific thing, uh, although well-intended, it, you might not be getting the, uh, the maximum value out of that. And I think that's kinda what, uh, Councilmember, uh, Legay is saying, is, is how can we lever- leverage this? Um, truth be told, uh, we have three, uh, commercial districts. It's pretty much downtown, Shea Corridor, and a, a little bit of, uh, Sora. So it's, it's, it's not like, um, these funds could be, uh, I don't wanna say abused, but, you know, there's not a ton of them that, that they're gonna be diluted. I think, um, your intent is, is well-founded, and I, I think there's, uh, um, a possible way to leverage this in, in the right way, in a, in a productive manner.
Yeah, I, I'll agree that, well, thirteen years later, a lot of things have changed. And when I read this, they do mention older areas of downtown linking to new development, talking about the avenue. So I, I thought it was kind of ambiguous, and I wasn't quite sure. I underlined anything that had to do with the downtown money in the minutes. Most of the minutes were all about the preserve. There was very little reference to actually defining what's the downtown. So I, uh, I called, uh, two of the council people who were involved in this at the time, and our former mayor, Sharon Morgan, who was the mayor at the time, and, uh, what I got from them was they all three agreed that they were non-specific for a purpose. And that was that they felt they couldn't, uh, Sharon Hutchinson's words were, we knew that we couldn't predict the future, and we didn't wanna lock the money to a specific set of streets or projects to tie the hands of future councils. That's why we were very non-specific, and we just called it downtown. Uh, Sharon Morgan said that during the discussion, uh, subsequent to this, they were trying to talk about lots that were empty near the Chamber area and other parts of town, and they were hoping to fill in those areas. Um, Councilman at the time, Kavanaugh, said that his discussion centered around flat two oh eight, which is a pretty large area, and that they could use some of that money to, uh, upgrade that if the, if the avenue side, they didn't want one side to look depressed if the other side came in brand-new. So they was going to use that money to do some upgrading on flat two oh eight, which we know is quite expensive, goes towards the bowling alley and towards the Chamber, even further than that includes all that parking area. So the three of them seemed to be in agreement that they were, they were, they were non-specific on purpose because they didn't know what was gonna happen ten years from now. And I can't find any reference in here whatsoever to designate streets. And then I, I know in our, um, subsequent plan, in, um, in our downtown area specific plan, that goes even broader in that plan and the Swaback plan as well. So, uh, while I appreciate the fact that they were concerned with the downtown, I, I do think that they, they were leaving the door open by not specifically mentioning streets so that the future could be decided by whatever council was here and whatever circumstances, um, we happened to encounter. Um, because of our downturn in the economy, obviously, we need whatever money we can, we can get because our money is very limited. And I'm always concerned whether we're going to be losing our construction sales tax, but tourism and marketing is extremely important, our jumpstart is successful. I, I, I really do think that they wouldn't have an objection to us gearing this money towards economic development. Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, were you done?
Yes, I'm done.
It sounded like.
I'm too much agreed with what you said.
It sounded like you were wind- winding down, so.
I won't, I wound down, right ahead.
Very good.
Um, in, in, in reflecting on this, I, I agree with you wholeheartedly. I mean, it was, it's very general, it's very difficult, I mean, there was this, there was some, as we recall, there were some bullet points in there, and one of them actually said Millennium Mall, which, which is infrastructure. It's not, it, it enhances, you know, the economy, but it's particularly infrastructure. They talked about vital interest in a viable downtown area, I mean, that's. Since, since that, that resolution, um, precedent, though, however, has utilized that money primarily for, for infrastructure. So I'm a little sensitive going forward for this council or future councils. So my motion's gonna include, and, and I'll, I'll, I'll put it out there and see if it makes sense, I want, I wanna still have the word, uh, infrastructure improvement in there and try to delineate that from economic development, which is kind of, as our economic development plan, uh, indicates, that talks about business attraction, retention, so forth and so on. So, um, let me, let me take a shot at it and, and see how y'all feel about it, and, um, we'll kinda go from there. My motion in this regard, uh, and once again, the goal here is to, for me, from my perspective, is preserve the integrity of the original resolution, however, expanding the scope in consideration of our economic development plan. That's my rationale for moving this way. Commencing fiscal year thirteen fourteen, forty percent of the tenth of a percent of excise tax is to be dedicated to the downtown town center business area for infrastructure improvement and development, with sixty percent of the, tenth of a percent of excise tax dedicated to the, to town-wide economic development and the economic development plan implementation. A stipulation in terms of preserving our commitment for what I think our citizens felt downtown development was, stipulation here is that, that the tenth of a percent of excise tax fund balance at the end of this fiscal year is maintained for the town center downtown business area, um, development and infrastructure improvement. That's a muscle, but I'm, I'm trying to be as clear as I can and choose my words so the future councils have a little more, um, meat on the bones to, uh, kinda get their arms wrapped around.
Does anyone wanna second that before we discuss it?
I'll second it.
All right, I'll open it up to discussion. I'm, I'm not quite sure, well, how you arrived at the percentage of the forty and the sixty?
Well, um, a couple ways. Um, first of all, I bounced my idea off Town Manager. And having just gone through the budget process, I was looking at fifty-fifty split. He felt comfortable with a forty-sixty split. Also, in looking at our package here this evening, when you look at, um, money that we're looking at to implement the downtown development plan, which includes the tourism and several other things, that amount of money kind of comes out to about sixty percent of, of what our total revenue is in that particular line item. Um, at the same time, that forty percent preserves specifically, um, dollars, uh, for infrastructure improvement for that town senate area, what, which we now call town center. So it was not an arbitrary decision, it was based on looking at kinda what we're proposing this year. And if I may mention this, uh, for those of us that have had some history up here, when we've looked at these types of, uh, items, we've had some flexibility budget by budget in terms of maybe modifying percentage. I think this is a good starting point. For example, eighty, eighty-five percent of our construction sales tax revenue for a number of years was dedicated to capital improvement. When we went into the downturn, downturn, and we weren't doing a lot of capital projects, and our general fund was really hurting, we came back and passed the resolution and tweaked that percentage fifty-fifty, which is what, what maintains today. So the sixty-forty, um, as I said, is not arbitrary. It preserves the integrity of downtown infrastructure, and it also, um, targets a significant amount of money for the implementation of our, uh, economic development plan.
Councilman?
Madam Mayor, uh, Councilman, um, it might've been your intent, but since, uh, and I agree with your concept of leaving the funds that are left over as the baseline for the infrastructure, um, but was it your intent that moving forward, since the sixty percent EV program and implementation would be at zero, that that base couldn't be used at all for any of that, even though that makes up forty percent of the whole plan? Do you follow what I'm asking?
Yeah, I, I, I think, I, I, from my perspective, starting in fifteen thirteen fourteen, we're, we're starting basically from ground zero with the forty percent and the sixty percent. Because that tenth of a percent was, uh, felt believed and historically in precedent, that money was spent for downtown infrastructure or downtown development, I think it makes sense to take that amount of money and push it, push it on, on that side. So how I would envision this, Julie's head's probably spinning, the way I would envision this is that we have this tenth of a percent, and basically now you have two dedicated funds. And it becomes really crystal clear that when we start talking about, um, let's say, the, the avenue project, let's say we decide that we wanna do lighting project down the road, we wanna do canopy, or I'm saying, uh, it's town center, you know, napping here is town center, just not the avenue. You know, we could go into the park basically and say, you know, we've been talking about life on that path forever. So there are a lot of infrastructure needs. How many times have we heard Councilman Hanson say, we need to do some info on our sidewalks? So I think there are some capital needs there to say, that making believe that I wanna preserve that money into kind of a savings account and, and, and move it over. But beginning that year, both funds are starting at zero, one just has a little more in the bank than the other one.
Madam Mayor, or could I, as a follow-up, so for example, let's say the implementation plan starting next year was a hundred dollars, you're saying we couldn't use forty dollars from the existing funds and then find the sixty dollars from some other source? Do you follow what I'm saying? I, I realize, or are you actually lying at him that you want this a hundred percent infrastructure only, not any other economic development? Cause obviously, there's a portion of that that goes towards, um, helping the downtown as well.
Well, the, the, the way, the way the motion read is that forty percent would be for the, for the town center, um, um, in, in, the, infrastructure improvement and development. So there's, there's, there's some room there for interpretation. Whereas that sixty percent is dedicated to town-wide economic development, you see? Cause what we always get into is, and, and the Town Manager has, has talked to a lot of us about this, when you go up in Shea Corridor, and you look outside town center, there's a lot, probably more sales tax dollars being contributed out there. And we've all heard for years about this downtown development fund, it's like, well, you know, what's happening out here? So I think what this does is it segregates the fund with an emphasis on infrastructure and what we are calling economic development, which is defined by our plan. Can I answer your question?
Councilwoman Vicki?
Mayor, thank you. The other thing, way to look at that, uh, Cecil, is that the, the balance that's there now was collected under this old assumption. So it feels like to me that since it's already been collected, that's what it's to be used for. If we're making a, a change now, it's a legitimate change, as we move forward, that forty percent is, I mean, that sixty percent is for any economic development. But this is how I feel it was, it, it is a contract. I don't think it's really that vague, I mean, the motion was one point oh oh one for downtown development. I mean, that's what the motion was. So that's, that's really not that vague. So I think moving forward, it would be a lot more comfortable that we make this change and then start using that money. And, and again, I don't even think we'd be talking about this, I think, um, someone else said this, if we weren't, you know, in kind of the, the states we are, like when we changed the construction sales taxes. It's kinda forcing us to reevaluate a little bit, but I feel like up to this point, it has been collected under, you know, under that, and that's what I'd like to honor that.
And, and Mayor, if I may, to, to further clarify, uh, Councilman Yeats' question, you know, we, we just had a presentation by Paul, and, you know, this is the one point two, it might be a little higher than that. And at the end of the day, by the end of this, this fiscal year, um, that fund balance is, is, is not gonna be that high. So you're gonna be moving over maybe, you know, a couple hundred thousand, three hundred, four hundred thousand dollars, uh, it's, unless, you know, we extend the use of that fund for what it was intended for on, in, in, uh, on downtown, so.
So, so just so I can clarify, are you saying that whatever the fund balance is after we do the avenue, plus whatever we collect from now on is divided? Or are you saying that that fund balance is only used for the downtown, and we're starting from zero money for the forty-sixty split?
Yeah, in, in, in vision, envision two buckets. Um, in one bucket, forty percent of the tenth of a percent, um, uh, excise tax goes into one bucket. And that sixty percent of the, uh, one tenth of a percent excise tax goes into another bucket. The one bucket for the downtown development would all already have, uh, uh, you know, a little something in it because that was the intention from the policy that we've been operating under since two thousand, which, you know, you stated that it was broader. I've been on the council for six, seven years, and we've always interpreted that pretty much as downtown development, and there's some precedence there. So once again, I'm just trying to honor that and preserve that integrity. And as Councilwoman Vicki mentioned earlier, now we're engaged in a policy change. So going forward, that's why I'm talking about creating these two buckets in thirteen fourteen, not, not at this particular point in time. Is that answer your question?
Not, well, so then the money that we have left over now, that from the Seeding project, whatever is left in the, in the balance from the excise tax, are you proposing that that's going to be divided forty-sixty or no? So you're saying that that is exclusively gonna be used for what, infrastructure?
That would, that, that, that would be in a dedicated fund for town center, um, infrastructure improvement and development. So for instance, if you, if you develop the, um, south side of the avenue, um, whether it's infrastructure or incentive, that could be used for that because that's specifically in the downtown senate area. Cause our economic development plan doesn't really talk about, um, development, construction development. It talks primarily about, um, business attraction, business retention, marketing, and tourism. And, you know, just looking at the future, you know, we always wrestle with this. And just think, uh, as we look at fourteen fifty, and I think most of us will still be here, I think it's gonna be a lot easier to decis- make decision about how much money we wanna spend on economic development because we'll have a dedicated source, and we can, we can basically say, hm, you know, let's spend a higher percentage on attraction versus retention versus, right now, jump is comes out of general fund, is that correct?
No, not, not. No, not not.
Comes out of the general fund, thanks.
That's true.
This year, last year, came out of.
Um, I'm just looking at our presentation here, it says Jump Start did general fund portion and then VPAC general fund portion. That's that's what I meant.
Right.
Anyhow, so, you know, that's that's my motion. Um, do we have a second?
We did.
Okay, I'll just go. All right.
Henry.
Yeah, I can I can understand what you're saying. I just I just have a problem with tying the money down. I mean, we're making a decision right now, they're saying we can't use any more of this money for something else. And there just might be a need that we have to use that money for something else. If we lose our construction sales tax, we're going to lose three hundred thousand dollars a year. If we end up with a shortfall that Julie is predicting, that's six hundred thousand dollars on top of that. I don't really feel comfortable tying any money. I I think we all know the spirit of we would like to use as much of this money for downtown and we would like, we do need economic development. But to tie a certain percentage of that and to say we can't use any more of that if circumstances change, if the economy gets worse, if we don't have the construction sales tax, if the if uh we if our our sales taxing uh revenue starts to go down, as far as retail has gone down, I just feel that we we shouldn't tie ourselves to a certain percentage and and say we can't use the money. That's that's a an absolute dedicated fund and we have an awful lot of those that we can't touch the money. So I wouldn't be in favor of specifying a certain amount. I I think as far as I'm concerned, I understand the spirit of what they wanted to do. I still agree, after speaking to um Councilwoman at the time Hutcheson, Councilwoman Hutcheson, that they said downtown, but they specifically did not specify a certain street because they were leaving it open and they didn't want to tie their hands. So I don't see any language in here that says you can only use this for Avenue to Fountain or you can only use this for the for infrastructure. It's so vague here. It says the older downtown area. But regardless of what it says here, we are right now thirteen years later and we have a really bad economy and we don't know what's coming. So I would not be in favor of tying the money to anything specific. I think we will use our best judgment when each issue comes up and decide what's best for the town at that time.
Madam Mayor, if I may, if if you didn't have a dedicated fund, you wouldn't be, you would you would not be affording this median project right now. If you didn't have a dedicated fund, you would not have improved the um north side of the avenue. And I've been at this for seven years and when you talk about downturn at the time, we're looking at we're we're looking at our revenues leveling off where we're looking at twenty thirty percent. And we had dedicated funds and we preserved and we protected those funds. Because if we didn't, Mayor, we wouldn't have the money probably to do this project. We we wouldn't have, well, we probably wouldn't have the fund balances we do, we probably wouldn't have the general fund reserve we did. Because if things aren't protected, what happens is that the money is spent. And for six years, rather than spending money, what we did is we reorganized, we downsized this organization, we, you know, did what we had to do to get through um a slope that was going like this and now we're going like that. There are significant needs in the downtown area and I'm simply saying that we need to preserve some money for that. And I understand you've talked to some folks, I've talked to the same folks over the years and they did a great job doing what they did. However, from my perspective, it's practice and precedent that sets the course. And our practice and precedent has been to preserve those funds and to use it for downtown development. So with that being said, I have a motion on the table and um a second and I'd like to call for the vote.
So any other discussion on this?
Okay, uh, Henry, do you mind if we talk about this a little bit longer? I'll honor you if you want to vote for it, but I I think.
No, that's this, I I'm just basically saying I'm ready to call a vote, but if you want, if you wanted.
I think we have to vote, don't we?
Well, we have to vote on following the question, but if you want to discuss this first and further, I'm not adverse to that.
Okay. So you'll rescind your call to question?
I'm suggesting that I'm I I'm well ready to call the question.
My my concern with this is just like you said, I I originally it was planned for the downtown, a portion of that downtown included some economic development activity. Uh, you're you're specifying it for infrastructure and I don't think the mayor means that she wants to take the rest and put it in the general fund, but I I guess I'm I'm leaning more along the lines of we're starting at ground zero. I think some of that money was intended for economic and development activity, just as it was pointed out, whether it be the Jump Start Biz or or those other fund things. Um, so to say that, so to say that we're starting next year at ground zero, so now we're having nothing to start our economic development plan, but we have that lump sum for infrastructure, I think it was the intent, no matter how you look at it, that some of that was supposed to go towards economic and development activity. And so that's kind of where I'm, I've got a little concern about, okay, along of of what the mayor's saying, that a hundred percent of it is infrastructure only and now we're at ground zero. I understand your intent, I and I uh um I I'll go along with that, but I think there was another intent that's a portion of that.
Sure. And 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 I and if I may, Mayor, I thought through that too. So, you know, I think what you do is you look at facts and you look at the numbers, you know. Our our projection, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, forty percent of that is a hundred and forty thousand and sixty percent of that is two hundred and ten thousand. That's pretty much what we're budgeting for the economic development for FY thirteen fourteen. So that's where I arrived at my numbers. So you're not starting at zero, you 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 will have have that money, but at the same time, you're preserving the infrastructure stuff. And, you know, as I've stated, over the years, how many times has someone come before us to say, well, let's use that for downtown, let's use the downtown development fund for that, and let's use the downtown development fund for that, and let's use it for this and let's use it for that? And basically, we stood our ground and basically said, no, that's not downtown development. And that's what starts happening unless you have dedicated funds. And to the mayor's concern, Mayor, if we enter into a crisis situation, we we can come up here and and make another motion and another resolution and change that percentage and move it around, um, if if we choose to, because we have done that in the past. So I don't look at it as being locked into it, we can decide how to how to manage that.
Madam Mayor.
Well, I believe it's a lot harder to undo something once you've done it and I still don't want to lock any of the funds into anything specific. I think that the reason we're up here and future councils will be up here is to look at the situation at the time and make the decision. And that's what I'd like to say. And I think that in the past, we've made the right decisions. I think we made the right decision on on uh using the funds for the avenue and we'll make good decisions in the future. But I'd rather it be a council decision rather than to say, you know, we're locked in, we can't use this money. There is nothing in these minutes that says that downtown is the Avenue to Fountain. And if someone can find that language, he can show it to me. And after speaking to two council person people and one mayor who was there at the time, and they all are in agreement, then I I can't say that any of this is directed just to downtown.
Mayor, I'm uh, Mayor, if I may, I I'm not sure you've heard anything I've said.
I've heard everything that's said.
I think that I I think, well, it's fine you can disagree, but precedent has been set in terms of how that money has been spent. And you you just mentioned the notion of not locking things in. This council, including yourself as the mayor, just just created a um pavement management program and we're locking money in for that for the next seven or eight years. Now, I'm not, I don't have an issue with that. Um, we've been talking about pavement management and doing things of that nature for a while. We cut back during the recession, so we're moving forward on it now. Yeah, you know, I and and at this point, it doesn't have to do with what person A or person B said and and I trust everything they've said to you is true. But the citizens of this town and the practice has been to utilize that tenth of a percent for downtown development and infrastructure improvement. I don't know if it's so difficult about that. It's not, it's 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 identifying a need, yet we're looking at a policy and moving it forward to cover the cost of a new program called economic development. And um, thank you.
Councilwoman Dickie.
Um, I don't think we're trying to say it has to be on Avenue to Fountain. I think it's kind of that whole area. And again, when it comes to economic development, it's the entire town we're talking about. Um, when we first began talking about the median and there were some people that were opposed to it, one of the justifications we gave to going ahead with it was that, well, we're using it from a fund that we can't use for anything else. So they say, oh, why didn't you fix Suaro with that, or why didn't you do that? And we said, well, because this is specifically for that. So if we're going to make that change, I guess I I'm asking you, are are you wanting to put this entire amount into the general fund? What what?
No, no.
Because I think, because if if what Henry is um suggesting is splitting the sixty forty, but it's still economic development, is that what for locking it in or not?
No, I'm not, I'm not talking about putting it in general fund. I'm talking about leaving it where it is and having the council decide on how they want to use it at the time. That's simply that. So just like we decided to use it in the median, just like we want to pay VPAC out of it, we want to pay Jump Start Biz, if we weren't able to take that money out of there, we wouldn't have any other money to do it and we certainly need it for marketing and promotion and tourism. So we have the funds. Uh, I I just think that we should, we should make the decision on how to use it.
And I think I I appreciate that. Um, one, those things that you mentioned, though, we've only paid portions of them because we kept in mind that it was only legitimate to use portions of it. So we only use fifty percent here and there. So so in other words, if we go forward, you know, it will, I feel like we'll still be breaking with, but and I and I and again, I'm I'm sorry that I seem to be the the one that's seeing this a lot more clearer. Here's Vice Mayor Hutcheson moved to approve ordinance zero twelve by increasing the sales tax rate by a total of point oh oh four and designating point oh oh three for mountain preservation and designating point oh oh one for downtown development. That's pretty clear. I so if we want to change that, I think we need to change it rather than every time something comes up saying, well, let's take it out of that. I I'd I'd rather go along and make a wholesale change like Henry is saying and then we can go forward with it.
Well, I guess my next question would be then, what is downtown? I we have signs that go as far as Safeway that says town center. Are we talking about, we're not talking about just the avenue? Are we talking about all the way to Safeway? Are we including Suaro? Then what exactly is the downtown? And we may, we may need something in one of the other uh business corridors, which is part of economic development, so.
I'm sorry, but it does go to Fountain Hills Boulevard, um, it goes from beyond, you know, Panorama, Fountain Hills Boulevard, El Lago in Palisades, and then even Montana beyond Palisades. So it is quite a bigger area and um, so it would go to Safeway, right? Yeah.
Madam Mayor, if I may, just.
I wanted to put that, Councilwoman Brown, did you want to?
Thank you.
Blocking.
You saying I'm fat? So I, you know, I I hear the concern about and the cry, what happens if if the uh downturn continues and if we have a major loss of money and we need money? And if that's the case, we'll regroup and we'll redo everything we have to do to keep this town close. And but I have to concur that this money has been set aside for a very specific reason, even though, call it vague, call it whatever you want, I we've had people stand before us time and time again asking for it. And the council, and I've only been here five years, but the previous councils have been very, very dedicated to making sure it was downtown economic development. And that was set up thirteen years ago, as we discussed, and I think it's time that that uh we look a little further than just the downtown area. I mean, we're we're looking at uh tourism and being very generous to tourism. So why not go ahead and do a forty sixty split as as is proposed?
Anyone else?
Mayor, if I may, um, in in my motion, I specifically said the downtown um town center business area, which in our package is a a rad- a ravelared area, which has been defined as our town center in in a previous project Councilman Yates was involved in. What was that referred to as?
That's the town center?
Yeah, that's the the anyhow, it doesn't much matter. But um, I'll come up with the name. But we had designated the town center, which is an exten- extensive area. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
All right.
Thank you. So uh, Councilmember Roger, so if we have a hundred dollars left at the end of this year, you are going to split it sixty forty, forty percent goes in the infrastructure and then sixty percent, we're starting zero. So a hundred percent of whatever's left over goes into the infrastructure of downtown or the town center area and then we're starting at ground zero. But you made reference earlier that the amount that's being proposed for economic development activity was going to get funded from what's left over. Did I misunderstand that?
As I mentioned, if you're bringing in three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a tenth of a percent, um, you will have two hundred and ten thousand dollars available from the excise tax.
Okay, so going forward, I'm sorry.
Yeah, because this is, this expenditure in this proposal is for thirteen fourteen.
Okay, I understand.
So you, yeah, so you'll have those. The money will be there for the program. And it's not specific, it's the money will generally be there to spend how you want on the program.
Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call motion, please?
Councilmember Yates.
Aye.
Councilmember Roger.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Dickie.
Aye.
And Mayor Pennell.
Aye.
Mayor four one.
Let's see, where are we? Uh, we're up in a raise, consideration of approving an extension of time for the expiration date of the Second Amendment and restated license agreement with Coxcom Incorporated dated May first, two thousand and seven, from April thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen to July thirty first, two thousand and thirteen. Okay?
Mayor Calhoun, members of the council, staff's been in negotiations with Cox Communications for to renew their cable license agreement, which expires um on April thirtieth. Um, it doesn't appear that we're going to be able to be completed with a a new agreement and that we're asking, and and it's it's in cooperation with Coxcom, to uh extend the agreement to uh July thirty first so that we can complete the new language and and get it back in front of both entities.
Any speaker cards on this?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Uh, is there any council discussion? Can I get a motion?
Mayor Calhoun.
In a second.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair five two. Discussion with possible directions to staff regarding resolution two thirteen dash thirteen adopting the Fountain Hills Fire Department master plan.
Mayor Calhoun, members of the council, um, we we don't have a fire services master plan for uh basically build out of the community. Um, and then discussing it with the fire to with the fire chief, um, I asked him a number of months ago if he would put together um a master plan for for the um council consideration that would uh um help us fashion the um fire protection services for the future. So um I asked Chief La Greca if he would give a presentation regarding a a fire master plan and you have it in front of you tonight and it is staff recommendation to approve it.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Uh, as town managers stated that you thought it would be a good idea if we crafted or started the process of crafting, quite frankly, a living document to take it from this point to the end with a little bit of history involved with it. Um, I thought it was a good idea also, as you know, we've never done this before, we've always presented to the council a three year operational plan, usually in a work study uh environment, and that's how we articulated what we are doing and what we are going to do, unless it was something new or unusual where we came back and we needed your direction. Uh, it's not a very big report, uh I di- I didn't want to encumber the council or the citizens uh with a lot of verbiage in there that really made no sense to most people. And so what I I figured I'd do tonight, instead of going through this thing totally, I would just hit some of the highlights from the table of contents and if you have any questions or directions, uh, I'd be more than happy to take those and uh move it forward. But again, this is a plan to be a living document that would probably be renewed every year, maybe. probably be renewed every year, maybe at Town Manager's discretion prior to the fiscal year or just shortly. There would have to, because there are a few documents in here, like the manager's report that does change monthly and gives a quick rundown of what we do. So, there's a few things that we'd want to take out, or renegotiating the, the new fire contract. There may be some verbiage that would necessarily have to go in there. But it starts off with basically an executive summary of the whole report. And it also gives, in that executive summary, uh, a little bit of history of, uh, Rural Metro's relationship with the town of Fountain Hills, which is, we've been here since nineteen seventy seven. So we pretty much came out of the dirt when they dug the fountain. First fire station was the Kwanahu Valley. Uh, the second piece was the organa- organizational overview, which describes what we look like, uh, with our staff, our management. Uh, one thing that we like to, uh, bring forward is that, uh, in at least seventeen years that I know of, and maybe a couple of years longer, uh, we have not grown the fire department as far as staffing. When I came here seventeen years ago next month, we had two chiefs on duty and, uh, eight firefighter paramedics on duty. And that's our staffing today. So the town has probably doubled in size, population size. Uh, there's probably double the roof tops here now that, what we're here seventeen years ago. So, you know, we believe that we, along with the direction of the council, is passing organs, those residential sprinkler organs, OHSKAN organs, those kind of things that, uh, as a team, we were able to kind of hold the line on our, our staffing and kind of looking at best practices throughout the valley. Uh, we kind of bucked those and we did what we thought was best for town of Fountain Hills and didn't try to mirror any other fire department in or around the area here. Uh, there's a section in here on fire station locations, uh, how long we've been working on that, how we ate work on that, what, what drives us to get to this point where it's not just me or Randy coming up with these numbers or these ideas. Where it comes from NFA, it comes from ISO, and, and best, best, best practices with fire departments in the valley. So it goes into that a little bit. We talk a little bit about apparatus. You probably wonder why, but apparatus is a very expensive piece of the fire department. And, uh, when we take delivery of this new piece of equipment, this new pumper later on this year, uh, we will have a complete suite of trucks that were designed specifically for this community, meaning they were built to navigate going up the hills under power, to be able to stop them coming down the hills, uh, having them do the, the turning and the radiuses, the cul-de-sacs, uh, navigate the two, three hundred foot driveways, fire rock and throughout towns. And so these are really specific trucks for this community here. And again, you know, we, we watch what we spend on maintenance on these trucks. So we try to do whatever we can to keep our maintenance level down. And, uh, later on tonight, we'll talk about vehicle replacement. And our statistics that we keep have shown that the truck that's gonna be replaced and put in a reserve status lasts two years for sure has consumed half our maintenance budget. So, that, that's a strong signal that it needs to slow down a little bit. Uh, also, we're starting to run more and more of the little truck concept. We had the new one. Uh, hopefully, we're gonna put a chassis under the old one and bring that up to speed, and then we'll have two road trucks. So we're hoping that will, again, save us a little money going forward. Uh, we talked about ISO Insurance Service Organization, uh, which we have a class three rating, which is an extremely high rating for a community our size. Um, I believe that once we get near that time when we pull the trigger on the third station, uh, that third station will push us up a class from class three to class two, because we barely missed it, but we got penalized this time because all Eagles Nest was looked at as being totally populated, because the streets are there, the infrastructure is there, the heights are there. So in the eyes of ISO, that was a complete functional neighborhood, even though there's nothing there. And so you can take a look at that. We talked about mutual aid. As you know, we have formalized, we meaning the town of Fountain Hills, not Rural Metro, we have formalized agreements with all our neighbors, and we have agreements with the county and the state also, which again allows us to keep our costs down a little bit by not having to have as many trucks from then, uh, on the street every day and in the budget, because we share resources. Uh, then we go into a, just a real quick little summary. And then we put a couple of exhibition pieces in there, and one is the, uh, exhibition aid, which is part of the contract that, uh, describes what our response time, uh, should be, needs to be without causing an exception. And those exceptions are put on the manager's report, so he can see every month how many times we're not meeting our response time. Uh, I also put a copy of the manager's report in there for you to see. And again, that's a compilation of all the work that we do to honor the contract that we have with you. Um, we talked a little bit about the operational plan and all that really is, and, and this can come out later on, but I wanted to put this in there as Exhibit C was a memorandum for a work study back in two thousand and seven to then Town Manager Pickering, uh, clarifying what our constraints were by going out and studying all these vacant sites in the town of Fountain Hills. And at this time, we've probably studied twelve vacant sites that the town owned and a few that the town does not own. And, uh, we have all the empirical and statistical data on, on those studies. Uh, again, we don't do that because, uh, Scott La Greca thinks it's a good idea, or the Town Manager has a super plan on figuring that out. We use a, a computerized program called ESRI, our few math. We originally, uh, learned how to use this through the Phoenix Fire Department. Uh, they had to break off with us when they passed the bond issue to build eight stations. And through our relationship with Phoenix, we had a contact with the City of Scottsdale. Ken Valverde had a contact over their IT department. I had a contact with their fire chief. And we were able to get them to run our data for us, so we didn't have to go out and spend the seven thousand dollars for the computer program, uh, to run this. And they're still doing this today. So, if we all of a sudden want to study a site, want to, you want us to go out and study a site, alls I have to do is go up to Ken Valverde and within an hour, I can give you that information. So, again, that's just a little piece of historical data showing, again, confirming what the rules were and pretty much are today. That's what we're looking at when we look at. Uh, the last thing that they put in here is just a little piece of, uh, Rural Metro history, and that was really more corporate history than it is the, uh, summary, the history that, in the first part of, uh, uh, plan. So with that said, I'll be more than happy to sit here and answer any questions that you may have on this, or suggestions on how to make it better, or what you would like to see in it, if it's not in at this time, or, I'm open.
Okay. Just a comment that I know that with all my meetings with you and the presentations I've gone through with Rural Metro, I know your number one concern is response time.
That's correct.
And I've said that over and over again. And so have they, not only with fire, but especially with the EMS.
That's correct.
And with the, um, the, the, uh, new methods, uh, for brain trauma, that's even more important, uh, every minute counts. Um, I went to that presentation and I realized that the difference between two minutes and three minutes just in response time. So, you know, it's, it's clear that you've put this all together with response time as the number one priority.
And, and that's, you know, another thing that, and what this forces us to do, and we've always been willing and doing it, is, is trying to measure what we're doing going forward. And, uh, this will give us another tool on how to measure what we're doing. With, with, with the response time, it, it is really the holy grail for us. But, you know, the dirty little secret in our town is, is that our response time is, is kind of skewed, because right across the street from Station One is, guess what? The senior citizens home. We go there thirty, forty times a month. And it only takes us a minute or less to get there. So, you know, if you really want to start getting into our figures, you know, there's a little bit of an aberration in there that we should probably try to figure out, uh, how to correct, and so it doesn't skew out on areas farther out. And that's what a document like this will do, will force us to take a harder look at.
They actually had a lot of nice things to say to you today when I was there.
The whole people?
With Paul at Fountain Hill Village, they said they were your best customers and...
I don't, I don't go there, but I'm afraid they won't let me out.
Ah. Well, they, they, they realize they, they occupy a lot of your time.
Yeah, we took three into the hospital, back to back to back today.
Yeah. Uh, anyone else want to ask a question?
Mayor Fine May?
Yes, aha.
Thank, thank, thank you, ma'am. Uh, Scott, I had an opportunity to, to read that. And, uh, I just want to say, well done. The master plan is, is well done. It's very informative and, um, gave me a good sense for where we're at and, and where you're, you're kind of telling us we should, should go. Um, just, just a couple of basic questions. I don't want to drill down on, I realize that it's a master plan and everything on there is subject to discussion and council approval like it has been historically. So I don't, I don't need, need to get Michael in that area. Um, you know, one, one thing that I think is important is we, we constantly talk about quality of life. And there really is no quality of life without public safety. And that's, that's police as well as fire. So this, this is important. This is, this is very critical. The five-minute response time, um, for example, Scottsdale, do you have any idea what the response times are?
Uh, same as us, but they go with the four minute instead of the five.
Okay. And, and, do they hit that?
Excuse me?
Do they hit that? Do they meet those goals?
Uh, no, but they're getting closer, because they just built in the last five years three stations and they have three more under the book.
So they're, they're expanding, so that's how they're, that's how they're addressing it, which is basically what, what, what you're, what you're suggesting here. Just, uh, uh, as I read through that, what entered my mind was if you add a third station, you're adding, well, that's, that's cost, and you're adding equipment and manpower, right? You'd, you'd have additional man, man, manpower. So my concern is, is, is affordability of the plan. But once again, it's a future plan and we don't know where we'll be revenue-wise at, at, at that point. Do you have any idea what, what this plan would cost?
A third station?
In, in today's dollars, you know, right now, what are we paying, what's, what are we paying the contract? Three point one million?
Yeah, the Rural Metro contract?
Yes. Mm-hmm. So, when we look at this plan, what, what would this plan cost us in terms of affordability?
Uh...
In today's dollars?
If we were to do it today, your part of the Rural Metro, not the fire truck, not the fire station, not the fire equipment, it would be somewhere between a million, a million and a half.
Additional cost. So we'd be looking at four point five million today to operate this, this model. And in the future, those costs more than likely will be higher. So, once again, I think it's an ambitious plan, and I'm all for the five-minute response time and, you know, anything we can do to, to enhance that. One, one last question. I know you've, you've shared with us your matrix over the years and all your concentric circles, the R two D two, whatever software that you're using. And, um, has there ever been consideration of two well-placed fire stations? I mean, just going back to the drawing board, could two well-placed fire stations address the five-minute response time in this town?
No.
No? Okay.
And under ISO, you know, they're really antiquated. They go in circles. And if we were to meet ISO's requirements for fire stations, we'd have five fire stations in this town.
I see. Very good.
And so, a- and going back to the five minutes, uh, what we've done, we made a, myself and the fire marshal, seeing ISO and a lot of other organizations, don't give credit for residential sprinklers other than on your own insurance bill. We decided to give ourselves a minute credit on response time because of those fire sprinklers.
I recall that.
So that's kind of a payback for the support that we've gotten from, uh, council, builders, the community.
Thanks, thank you, Chief. And like, as I said earlier, um, very well-done master plan. Thank you, ma'am.
Anyone else have a question? Uh, do we have any speaker parts?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Motion, please. Move to approve resolution twenty thirteen dash thirteen adopting the Town of Fountain Hills Fire Department master plan.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Me and I do. Okay. Thanks, Scott.
Anybody has any suggestions down the road?
Mm-hmm.
You know where we're at?
Thank you. Consideration of approving an expenditure from the Vehicle Replacement Fund in the amount of two hundred ninety-two thousand, two hundred ninety-one dollars and sixty-one cents for vehicles and equipment as scheduled in the Vehicle Replacement Schedule.
Mayor Tendell?
Want to go home?
I'm sorry, ma'am. Little levity, come on.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. A few years back, the Town Council approved the creation of a special fund, the Vehicle Replacement Fund, that would accumulate resources to provide an authoritative decision-making process for the evaluation, selection, and multi-year schedule of vehicle replacements based on available fiscal resources and the vehicle's age, mileage, engine hours, and repair cost. The way it works is that each department that uses a town vehicle is charged in their departmental budget, an allocation amount that sets aside funds to replace the vehicle when it's met its useful life. Because the vehicles in Fountain Hills aren't driven very many miles, the vehicles rarely make the hundred thousand miles but are at or over the life. But with the low mileage, the town can get a better resale value at the auction. So therefore, staff is recommending the replacement of the vehicles attached in the package. All of them are either overdue or due for replacement this fiscal year. We had budgeted four hundred and one thousand dollars for vehicles. This total is about three hundred thousand dollars. And the fund has eight hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in it. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Um, I just want to make one more comment. If, if the council approves these, there is a chance that one or more of the vehicles may not be here by June thirtieth, which means we just have to reappropriate it next year. So we would just make an, um, an appropriation in next year's budget to allow for something that we've ordered this year.
Okay. Any questions?
Madam Mayor? Thanks, Julie. Um, could you elaborate on the either or, meaning miles and age? Because is this a self-imposed limit that we put, or there's some other safety concerns? For example, if we limit a hundred thousand miles and eight-year-old vehicle, and it reaches eight years old before it reaches a hundred thousand, we still need to replace it. Could you elaborate on the reasons why?
Certainly, Mayor, members of the council. And that has been a topic of discussion because particularly as we're going through the, the economic downturn, there was a reluctance for us to replace a vehicle that only had sixty thousand miles on it, but was ten or eleven years old. But the policy set out, and we did review the policy again and, and kind of extend some of those terms, that we wouldn't do that. But the, you know, the policy is designed to allow for you to systematically set aside funds for each specific vehicle. And so when you reach the end of when you've accumulated the funds, you can no longer charge the budget. And then the auditors come along and say, well, why aren't you replacing that? Because you're depreciating it. So it's, it's, the policy is designed so that it's replaced at either a hundred thousand miles or ten years, or in some cases, twelve years for some of the trucks. So to answer your question, if it has sixty thousand miles on it, which most of these vehicles don't have a hundred thousand, but they're at least ten or more years old. But on the other hand, those vehicles will bring more value when you take them to auction, and that money goes right back into that fund. So it's, it's definitely a... So, it's, it's definitely a philosophical discussion, and we've had it quite a bit because there is a reluctance to place, replace a vehicle with miles that are under a hundred thousand. But, at some point, it has to be replaced. And if you wait and replace them, you may bump up in one year and have to replace a whole bunch of them. And then you're putting strain on the, the mechanics who has to fix them because there is wear and tear on them.
Madam, ma'am. Thanks, Julie. I just wanna make the point that it is good financial management as well as asset management that you are doing a tremendous job in. So, thank you.
Council, any questions?
Thank you, ma'am. A couple of questions. The, um, HERF, what, what is that? Is that, um, uh, what department is that? What do you, what does that mean by department HERF?
Um, Mayor, members of the council, HERF actually is, when I refer to HERF, I refer to streets.
Well, excuse me, ma'am. Um, the, okay, so that, HERF is the revenue fund that we, it's a, it's a revenue source. It's not an expenditure. So, I get... So, are HERF funds being used for those four items?
Um, Mayor, members of the council, again, when I say HERF fund, I mean street fund, and the HERF revenue goes into the street fund, that we refer to it as the HERF fund. But, revenues are an expenditure. Each year, for however many vehicles the street fund or the HERF fund has, they are charged, and money is taken from that fund and put over into the vehicle replacement fund for the vehicles that they have. So, for example, we used to depreciate street sweepers, and that was about, I forget how much, how many thousands it was per year, but we made the decision not to replace the vehicle so we no longer, because we're outsourcing it, we no longer have to put that money aside.
Oh, Mayor, that's my other question. The sweeper, what is that for community services? It must be something different?
Yes. And Mayor, members of the council, I should've mentioned that each of the department directors are here to answer any specific questions on the vehicle. Um, I can tell you what it is, but if you wanna know more about it, the community service director...
Excuse me, I just wanna know because I knew we were starting out, so I was trying to figure out why there was a sweeper on there.
It, exactly. It's what they call a tenant sweeper, and it's to sweep the parking lot? Nope. I knew I was gonna mess it up.
We currently have a tenant sweeper. It's a smaller sweeper, much smaller than the sweepers that the street department use. We use it for everything, uh, principally at Golden Eagle Park, but we also at times have used it other places. It's mostly for sidewalks, used for tennis courts, used for parking lots. Uh, because of the amount of linear trails that we have in there, the miles of, as well as the fact that we get a lot of debris because it's next to the wash, that there's constantly, uh, places that we need to sweep it. Uh, that's both storm damage and also, uh, wind damage. Anything that blows on it, we get a lot of leaf litter, things like that, need to be swept.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Do we have any speaker thoughts on this?
No, ma'am.
No? Any other discussions?
Yes, Mayor, if I may, just a quick question for Julie. Um, just, just a point of clarification. I, you know, throughout the evening, really, we had a, an extensive conversation on the ups and downs, pros and cons of so-called dedicated funds. Is this a dedicated fund?
Um, Mayor, councilman, I would say, yes, it is a dedicated fund specifically for vehicle replacement.
Thank you.
Any other discussions?
One more, ma'am.
One more?
Yeah, one more. Well, just because, um, and I'm getting back to the HERF thing, that y- y- you would put that under development services, though, right? Is that, is that the department, in other words?
Um, Mayor, councilman, I would say, it is the department, but it is, it is coming out of the vehicle replacement fund. The HERF fund or the street fund is charged every year for every vehicle. But, the funds are taken out of the street fund and put over to the vehicle replacement fund. So, that's where the money is coming from to pay for these vehicles.
Okay, Mayor. I, I, it just is, I guess I ca- I'm always having a hard time with this, uh, having a department named HERF, 'cause HERF is a fund source. To me, it's kinda like we fix, we did say, and we didn't call that, you know, a MAG grant. So, I always get confused on whether this is a source or an expenditure or a department. So, I don't know. I just wanna make sure where the money's coming from. Thanks.
And, and the HERF fund is a fund, and HERF revenue goes into the HERF fund. Most of the other cities call it a HERF fund as well. But, the main source of revenue is the HERF highway user revenue fund.
Okay. Anyone else? May I get a motion?
Madam, ma'am. I move to approve the expenditure from the vehicle replacement fund in the amount of two hundred ninety-two thousand, two hundred ninety-one sixty-one for vehicles and equipment as scheduled in the vehicle replacement schedule.
Okay. Okay. And further discussions? All right, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed?
Me, five you.
Okay. All right, we're up to number eleven. Discussion with possible directions to staff related to any item included in the league's Arizona citizen council weekly legislative bulletin or related to any actions proposed or pending before the state legislature can.
Well, ma'am, council, I'd be happy to respond to any of the ones that we, we pointed out today. We don't know a lot about, um, number of them because they were in action today, and we don't know what the status was. But, I know that, uh, the mayor's been involved with TPT. If you wanted to maybe enlighten a little bit about where they're, where they're at on that side of it.
Uh, yeah. Well, we are on that is that it seems that there's an agreement on the portal part, and that's the administration. So, um, the governor's office, the mayor's, and the league are all in agreement on the portal. Uh, as far as the auditing goes, there seems to be some movement there where, um, the DOR would be the sole authority for remote sellers and for multi-jurisdictional businesses. And that the town would have the ability to audit a single business that is, uh, only in Fountain Hills. Now, there's, there's still a question of, another issue that we had brought up which they haven't addressed, and that's what if it's a multi-jurisdictional business, like, let's say, Target that's in other areas, but we only wanna audit just our Target? We're not saying audit all the Targets. So, the DOR was considering at our last meeting that they would possibly allow us to do that business if we only did that one. But, as of the latest what's come out, they haven't considered that yet. And then there's also a question, uh, which I had asked Julie today because if they're talking about most, about businesses that are also in other cities and towns, we also have to be concerned about building, and if someone builds a house here, and, well, let's say it's, you know, Toll Brothers or MCO, whatever it is. We know that those, uh, those builders are also in other cities and towns. So, does that mean that if one house is built here, we can't audit that house, but we have to go through the DOR? So, there's still a lot more that has to be worked out, and I'm trying to try to get the answers to the question about the single business here. And as far as the TPT, right now, we're still pushing, uh, for, let's wait and get some good statistics on that and good figures. J O B T came out with a new set of figures, and they're still talking about a seventy-two million dollar loss. So, we don't know where we are. We've got, we've got everything from, we're gonna make thirty million to we're gonna lose a hundred and thirty million. So, what we're asking for is a neutral third party to come in and give us the actual figures on where we would be if the system was changed. But, we certainly don't want it to change 'cause it means a lot of lost revenue for the town. So, regardless of what the figures are, I'm still gonna fight against it. And I have the support of most of the mayors, um, in the other cities. And that's the only one that I have, except that other one that came through from Jason today. But, that one is, uh, still up in the air. We don't know what's going on with S B thirteen twenty-one, which turns into H B twenty-four oh four because it's been failed and amended, and we don't know where that's going. So, is it, is it, do you, you haven't even known anything on that one?
Yeah, they've retained it today, so that's good.
Or what we've obtained?
So, they must...
Okay.
That's the last I, I have, that they retained it in the Senate House. Um, but sometimes that could mean that they don't have enough votes, so they...
Yeah, they've retained it a couple of times, so that's good. Um, I wanted to just follow up on, 'cause when Ms. Calrigan was here, we, we were talking about the, uh, fourteen oh three, which became twenty-five seventy-three, which died. But, Senator Burgess had a hearing on it last week, and, um, it, I guess it was nothing that happened, um, officially with it, but it was a, a, a hearing about, um, you know, and again, it was the reroute bike sale, uh, thing in the agenda twenty-one. So, from what I found out, or, you know, asked or whatever, 'cause she did write me back, and, uh, Senator Calrigan said the bill is aimed at curbing purchases without side sources of funding but does not apply to anything purchased with public or taxpayer dollars. The drill down was at one, that basically said that, um, it, there, there are three things that have to happen to stop us from doing the kind of thing we did last Saturday, which is, um, you have to, uh, you have to accept the funding for, um, you know, a pass or something like that through, uh, a group that was espousing the overturning of the Constitution of the U.S. The act has to be undertaken with express purpose of adopting or implementing the UN Rio Declaration, and the city or town has to directly and knowingly take this action. Um, they did defer to you, Andrew, to make sure that you could confirm that with me because basically they're saying that they don't believe that they could use this statute to preclude municipalities from developing public transit programs, building hiking trails, having entered the codes, which is the bill that was retained today. But, would you agree with that?
Madam, ma'am, councilman, I think that Renee did a good job of pointing out some of the very obvious arguments we would make if anyone did attempt to use the statute to present a program like that. I think it has a number of defects, some constitutional, some just vagueness. So, I, you never say never, but it certainly is, I would prefer to have our argument in that particular case.
And Mayor, um, the, uh, another thing like what Cecil was clarifying earlier today, I wanted to clarify that since at our next meeting, we may be having a presentation by, um, Valley Metro, and what's it, Rural Metro, Valley Metro about, uh, the plan, and to reiterate again that there is no incentive that this town is getting to do this at all. So, we're just looking to see what options are there to serve our residents.
Right. If we get lucky enough to get one bus stop. So, I don't think, I, I, just from what I hear, I don't think that bill is gonna go anywhere. You know, it's been amended and changed so many times and watered down, and so many people are against it. But, thanks for keeping an eye on it.
Yeah.
Get some, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Madam, I just wanna make a comment on TPT. I wanna personally thank you for all the time that you've put into it, um, and working with other mayors and representing this council's position, which is unanimous, and representing the residents of Fountain Hills. So, keep up the good work. Seems like you, you still got a lot of fight in you for this one.
Thank you.
Madam, I want to remember the council, back to, uh, Senate Bill thirteen twenty-one. I'm hoping that I could get some direction that, um, we could emphasize this so we can stay on top of it to make sure that although it's being retained, I suspect that it could end up coming back, and remember, that's the energy code and the uniformity of that. And I know that our, our staff have some concerns about, on how they're doing that because they think that what has been written so far, it doesn't even, it, it gives lesser efficiencies in houses than what we would actually provide, uh, or require for that. So, I'm asking if we could stay on top of that one for, uh, like we are with TPT.
Right. And that one's already been amended, and we don't know how it's been amended.
Exactly. And as you indicated, that because the amendment's over the Senate, it'll end up, it'll end up having to go back over the House if they get it through.
Right. And then it's up to the sponsor to accept it or not with the amendments. But, we don't even know what the amendments are, so, you know, they could totally change it.
So, again, I'm asking if, uh, if I could take direct, get some direction so I can, staff will watch after that one.
Okay. And that's our direction. We're just keep our eye on everything.
We oppose it.
With all of us watching everything, they can't slip anything by us, right? Okay. Uh... Any other council discussions? Um, nothing. Okay. And can I get a motion for term?
Mayor, so moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye. Right.
All in favor?
Aye.